Chair Weeks, we're ready to get started whenever you are.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and start the July 13th, 2023 meeting of the San Rosa Planning Commission, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Carter.
Here.
Commissioner Cisco.
Here.
Commissioner Holton.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Vice Chair Duggan.
Here.
Chair Weeks.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Thank you. And we'll go to item two, approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from June 8th. Are there any changes or corrections? Okay, seeing none, those will stand as approved. So we'll go to item three, our public comment section. We're now taking public comments on item three, which is non-agenda matters. This is a time when any person may address the Commission on Matters not listed on this agenda, but which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. And if you could like to go to one of the podiums up there, you will be given notification and a timer will be set for three minutes.
Can I use overhead? Does it work?
Yes.
I'm not quite sure how to make it work.
And if you could please state your name for the record.
My name's Cliff Wiggum. I'm one of the property owners of the Roberts District and the organizer of the Gateway.
I'm sorry, could you speak directly into the microphone so we can hear you?
My name's Cliff Wiggum. I'm one of the property owners and the organizer of the Gateway Coalition in the Roberts District, newly formed Waller Roberts District. How can I make the overhead work?
Cliff, sorry, bear with me. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to turn this on and it's not working. Can the IT team please come out here?
We'll get somebody out in just a second to help.
Okay. The Roberts District was created as part of the downtown stationery specific plan. Previously, it was Transit Village, 25 to 40 units per acre, and it was zoned that in 2006. I bought my property in 2006 and six months later, it was rezoned to something I couldn't use the property for. In 2016, I created the Gateway Coalition, which is a collection of 10 property owners on a 10 acres of private property in what is now the Roberts District. We secured a grant from the EPA in 2018 to do the environmentals. We completed the environmental assessments in November 20th, 2020, and the properties were rezoned six weeks later, in January 1st, 2021, to the current unrealistic 6.0 floor area ratio. I've spent the last two years talking to developers and everyone tells me that it will never be developed because its positioning, not in eight years, not in 25 years. That it is on the south side of Highway 12. That's a four lane elevated solid earth freeway dividing Raywood Square and the Roberts District. Everyone says that the Roberts District belongs to be part of Roseland. An excerpt from your own staff report on enhanced infrastructure financing district, I will read to you. "Roberts Road area, south of Highway 12 and west of Highway 101. This area is better aligned with a potential future Roseland area EIFD since it is the east anchor of the Spasville Road corridor. The corridor is the central Roseland axis, which is in the past has been part of Roseland's study areas. Publicly desired infrastructure upgrades in the Roberts Road area as part of the EIFD formation process should be examined holistically within the rest of the corridor." To me, that's saying from your own staff that the Roberts District is part of Roseland. You removed it from the infrastructure tax financing district, so it no longer has a right for it being there, but it is burdened with this unrealistic 6.0 floor area ratio. And Walleyes, which is not very far, it's on the other side of Highway 12 and same distance from 101, from Raywood Square is a 2.0. We should be at 2.0 or back to the 25 to 40 units per acre. It looks like my time's up.
Thank you. Did you want to show us, since we had the delay on the overhead, did you want to show us something on the overhead?
I'd like to.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and do that.
How do I make it work?
If we can figure out tech to the rescue.
Are you tech?
Is it just one page?
It's actually, I have three, four. I was going to show you two. And I didn't finish everything I wanted to say, so I intend to be coming back to your next planning meeting.
Suggestions from staff?
We can take a look and see if it's a map of the specific plan area. I can pull that up.
Could we perhaps get copies made, the old fashioned hard copies made of that for the commission? Okay. I'm going to blame it on the heat, okay? Thank you, Mr. Wiggum. Anybody else here for in-person public comments? Anybody on Zoom for public comments?
If you're participating via Zoom and wish to make a comment, you can raise your hand by selecting the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're calling in, please press star nine. Chair Weeks, I'm seeing no hands raised and please be advised, we have about seven participants this evening.
Thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion and we'll move on to planning commissioners' reports. So I wanted to read our statement of purpose as I do every meeting. "The Planning Commission is charged with carrying out the California Planning and Zoning Laws in the City of Santa Rosa. Duties include implementing of plans, ordinances, and policies relating to land use matters, assisting in writing and implementing the general plan and area plans, holding public hearings and acting on proposed changes to the zoning code, zoning map, general plan, tentative subdivision maps, and undertaking special planning studies as needed." So with that, we'll move on to 4.2, Subdivision and Waterways Advisory Committee Reports. Are there any? Okay, Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, on July 5th, the subdivision subcommittee met and approved three different parcel map waivers, two for properties on Gurnville Road, one for an office condominium project, and another for a split between two commercial facilities. A third was approved on Hopper Road, accessed off of industrial, splitting into four parcels for light industrial development.
Thank you. And we'll move on to 4.3, Commissioners' Reports. I wanted to report that on Tuesday, the council heard the appeal on the Tierra de Rosa tentative map that we approved earlier this year, and the council upheld our decision, hence denying the appeal. Any other reports from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to Department for Staff Report.
Department Staff Report, thank you, yes. Good afternoon, Chair Weeks, members of the Commission, Jessica Jones. So I do have a couple of things for you. One, I wanted to let the Commission know that the draft, the public version of the draft general plan is going to be available for review, we hope as early as next week, perhaps as early as Monday. We're still working on the fine details and we will get a message out to the Commission as soon as it is launched. And that will start a kickoff to public community outreach that we're going to be doing for the draft general plan to get comments on what has been prepared based on outreach that we've done throughout this whole process. And that community engagement will happen through the end of the summer. And then just to keep you updated, and I'll give you more information and more specific dates as they become available, but we will be doing a joint meeting of the Commission and Council to review both the draft general plan as well as the draft EIR, and that we're anticipating to be in the fall of this year. I don't want to give a specific date at this time, we're not ready to do that, but as soon as we have that information, we'll get it out to you so you're aware. And then Chair Weeks already mentioned that the council denied an appeal of the Tierra de Rosa project that you guys heard and approved that time extension. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was that, following up on the short-term rental ordinance that the Commission considered a few months back, the council will be reviewing part two of a second reading of that ordinance at the July 25th council meeting. It is on consent. It includes the proposed changes that staff brought before the Commission, as well as some changes, the changes that the Commission was asking for to reduce the amount of outdoor burning, and then also some changes that council requested. So that, like I said, is going for a second reading on the 25th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So we'll move on to statement of abstentions. Are there any abstentions?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
I'm going to recuse from item 9.1. Last year, I ran for city council and the applicant had contributed to my campaign, though I don't believe that there is a conflict because the money was returned in late October. As Councilman Sorey would say, as an overabundance of caution, I want to make sure that there is no perception of a conflict, so I will recuse from 9.1.
Thank you. So you'll be leaving the dais after this?
That is correct, after the first item.
Thank you. Any other abstentions? Okay, so then we have no consent items today. We'll move on to a report item, which is House Santa Rosa, presented to us by Connor McKay.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Chair Weeks and members of the Commission. Really nice to see you all in person. I'm here today on what has been called a report item, but it's actually more resembling a study session about the House Santa Rosa Project, and I'll get right into that. So the House Santa Rosa Project is a grant-funded initiative to accelerate the production of housing in the City of Santa Rosa and helps Santa Rosa reach its compliance with Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So like I said, this is a grant-funded initiative, and this grant is called the LEAP Grant, which is a grant granted to us by State Housing and Community Development. And the objective of the grant is to help cities construct housing and, like I said, reach compliance with the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So the first deliverable of the House Santa Rosa Project is a development feasibility map and dashboard. This essentially is a map that allows users to understand how parcels can be developed throughout the city, primarily for housing. So there's kind of two full, two kind of uses for this tool. You could have a project concept in mind and find parcels throughout the city that can accommodate that project concept, or you can move around on a map and click a parcel and see how that specific parcel could be developed, or you could search an address in the tool. And so this is how the tool currently kind of looks. It's very kind of bare bones at the moment because we, this is kind of just a kind of a concept that our programmer has developed for us so far. But on the right side, you'll see a list of criteria or other characteristics of a project that a developer or an interested user could enter into the tool. And then you would click that search button at the top in blue and you would get a result of parcels that fit that criteria for development. So just as an example, I'm a developer who would like to build 25 units of housing with five units dedicated to very low-income households and 10 units dedicated to low-income households. I'm looking for a property that's currently vacant, allows for a 35-foot structure, is located in a specific plan area, so I can hopefully take advantage of some sequoia streamlining measures, and located in an area that does not require onsite parking. So I've entered all of that into the tool. I kind of flipped it from left to right, so the arrow would flow better. But as you can see, it also automatically calculates any potential density bonus units that would be granted to my project based on the number of affordable units and the affordability breakdown. And I've checked the boxes that I'm looking for as well. And as you can see, the blue outlined parcels on the tool are the only two parcels in the city that can accommodate that very specific criteria that I've entered. And as the tool gets further developed, we'll have a list of those parcels that would appear at the bottom as well. So there would be a list of the address and APN number and things of that nature below the actual map. So then you were to click on one of those results, you could see the address, the APN, the zoning district, the max market rate units, and then max height and other development standards, and also incentives for development such as that environmentally potential, environmental streamlining. This language under the incentives is a first draft, to say the least. This is kind of what the developer, the programmer came up with. And like it says on the slide, this is going to be refined and expanded upon in consultation with our attorney's office and other groups that we've been working with. And there's also what is currently called the warnings. We'll probably refine that as well, but this parcel is also flagged as potential tiger salamander habitat, so that gives this user an early upfront warning that, hey, you know, if you want to develop housing here, you'll likely need to prepare a biological assessment of some kind to potentially, to analyze any potential impacts in that area. So this, moving on to the second deliverable, this is a real-time development map and dashboard. We've currently created a dashboard that shows housing projects throughout the city, and you can filter them based on specific project attributes. And this would also show the phase of the application, whether it's in review, approved, or under construction. And ideally, once the tool is more built out, you could enter in filters such as projects submitted pursuant to Senate Bill 9, or other Senate bills or Assembly bills, or projects that received parking reductions through some means. So this is what the tool looks like currently. At the top, you'll see the list of projects, and this currently is at all developments in the city. But as you see in the bottom, there's different tabs for different council districts. So you could click each of those districts and understand how that council district is developing. And then you can zoom in on that map on the bottom left and click the blue dot to learn more about that housing project and what phase of the process it's in. And then at the bottom right, you could filter the projects citywide or by district based on specific criteria. Right now, it hasn't been built out to get super granular with that detail, but like I said, we're hoping to develop more information related to streamlining, leveraging state legislature related to housing, so we could analyze the effectiveness of state legislature, but also local policies that we may adopt or have adopted to incentivize various types of housing development. And just to kind of give more detail, so an example of an additional filter would be like, how many housing projects above 35 feet are, you know, in the pipeline in this council district? Because oftentimes, we hear from the community and members of council and other commissions that they're hearing a lot about people who are concerned about the intensity of development in their neighborhood, and we're hoping to be more transparent about where development is happening and what type of development is happening as well. So overall, the objectives of this project are to help community members and developers understand how parcels throughout the city can be developed. I kind of emphasized the developer use case for that first feasibility deliverable, but I'm also hoping that this tool can provide additional engagement for members of the community who maybe don't understand how their neighborhood could be developed. Because oftentimes, when we're managing housing development as planners, we'll get notes and phone calls and emails from neighbors who have, they thought that that empty parcel across the street from them was zoned open space because that's what their grandparents told them and that's what their parents told them. So when they get a postcard in the mail that it's being proposed for a subdivision or multifamily housing project, they become very alarmed. So we're hoping that that first feasibility tool can really serve as a bridge between the reality of the zoning restrictions of properties in their neighborhood and people who wouldn't typically be engaged in that type of process and knowledge. And then so that second tool would provide greater transparency regarding the housing projects that are proposed and approved and under construction throughout the city. And then that second tool would also create a lot of efficiency related to annual housing reporting. Right now, it's a very manual process, but we're hoping with this tool, we could kind of just click a button and we would generate all of the information that is required of us to be reported to the state for our housing production progress. And like I said, that second tool will also allow us to analyze our own policies and policies provided by the state that are supposed to incentivize housing and hopefully provide better informed decision makers and policymakers of what policies work to produce housing and maybe some areas for improvement. I've had a super great time working with a very diverse group of individuals who are very technical, much more technical than I am, and collaborating with the Planning Division, other internal departments to understand what are the questions that they're being asked of and how can we ask, how can we answer those questions before they're asked? And I'm hoping that you'll join me in this effort as well by providing some feedback on this project. So the timeline for this project is we were awarded the grant in January of 2022, and it took us a little bit to really get going on this project, but about a year ago, we went full steam ahead. At the end of last year, we distributed surveys about kind of the concept of the project, and we received around 500 responses from the community and from developers about the various tools. And that, the results of those surveys largely kind of confirmed our trajectory, and we kind of were able to see, yes, parking is a very hot topic for housing. Building height is a very hot topic. So that was, it was nice to kind of receive that confirmation in addition to getting some new ideas from the community, both residents and the developer community. So the current timeline for this project is the grant must be expended by September of 2023, but we have heard that the state is extending the deadline for this project to September of 2024. We have not received an official announcement in writing yet, but we have every reason to believe that it will be extended. So we're excited at the opportunity to really refine the tools and get a lot more feedback and provide beta versions and demos for the community and for developers. So like I said, the next steps are to kind of refine these tools that I've shown you with kind of the details that I've described, but also hoping to gather feedback from you all and synthesize previous feedback from, we received from the Design Review Board and the Cultural Heritage Board. Just to summarize the main points of their feedback, it is really emphasized on user friendliness, which is something that we're definitely trying to keep in mind because oftentimes, we create a tool and it makes sense to us because this is the type of work that we do on a daily basis. But we're really trying to make sure that, you know, somebody who doesn't know anything about zoning and potentially is not a computer savvy person can, as Duane Dewitt put it, put mouse to house. So, yeah, so the requested action is to ask questions about anything that you've So, yeah, so the requested action is to ask questions about anything that you've heard today, and then provide input on some of those details that would be provided in the tool, both the development tool and the real-time housing development map and dashboard. And there's my contact.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKay. I think what I'll do is see if the commission has any comments, and then we'll open the public comment portion and then bring it back for final suggestions, recommendations, comments, whatever. So we'll start right now with questions about the process. Commissioner Cisco.
I'm curious what the outreach to the development community looked like and how much participation you got there, since I would assume they would be important users of this tool.
Yeah, so we used our developer roundtable contact list, which was a list or a, a series of meetings that was conducted to kind of just discuss the experience of being a developer in the city of Santa Rosa. So we had that contact list that we provided direct email outreach to. And then I kind of asked the planners if there were, I provided that list to planners and said, hey, is there anybody else that you think we should contact? And then we also provided the link to the survey at the front counter, so more of like the, maybe the contractors or property owners that are pulling permits at the front counter, they could, they could scan their, a QR code to get to the survey. That, that's kind of the extent of it. They were kind of a difficult crowd to reach and get responses from, because they're pretty busy.
Busy, yeah. I get it. And then, how reliable is this going to be? And, I mean, to me, it looks like for a developer, it's a first look, let's go talk about this, and they may discover that it isn't a feasible set of circumstances, even though the map might suggest that it is. Like, how do you handle that?
Yeah, so in terms of reliability, we're really focusing on it being something that a planner can maintain going forward. So as zoning standards change, there would be like a front-end interface that I could say, okay, R16 front setback is now this, for example. And then in terms of, like, the map kind of indicating something, and then there being more investigation and revealing that, okay, it's not, it's not feasible. The tool is kind of, was intended to be, to answer a lot of the questions that we receive in pre-application meetings, which are generally relatively high-level, and kind of to do, like, property sourcing for developers. So if they're saying like, okay, this is kind of what the market is asking for right now, these large, high-density multifamily projects, or maybe single-family subdivisions, what kind of parcels in the city are suitable for that type of development that the market is asking for? So there's still, this isn't supposed to replace, like, the meticulous review process, but really kind of be like a first step, like you mentioned.
Any other, Vice Chair Duncan?
This looks like a great tool. It's be fun and exciting to use, I think, but on the real-time development part of it, which I think will, might be more of use to the public, are you going to have, like, sort of general dates for phase completion? So if somebody's like, oh, there's something big going on in my neighborhood, I don't know exactly what it is, what's the timeline, that they can use this tool to find that out, is one question. And then the other comment I have is, is the intention to inventory all the empty parcels in the city that are appropriate for housing and have them on here? Or how, how are you going to do that, just as things become known? Or are you going to do a general inventory upfront to put them on here?
Yeah, so, good question. So the first question about phasing, I think we're kind of limited to where a project is in the permitting process. There's been situations where I've asked developers who have an approved planning application, when do you think you'll break ground? And they always say, as soon as possible, but obviously, funding and supply chain and labor, and there's a lot of variables involved with that, so I would be hesitant to provide, like, future phasing, if that makes sense. But I think what we're kind of focusing on is what date was the planning application approved, what date was, were building permits approved, to kind of keep it a lot more reliable in that sense. And then, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
About the, the inventory of
Oh, right, right.
Empty lots that might be appropriate for housing.
Yeah, so I believe, I'm not exactly sure the source of our, like, vacant parcels data, but I'm thinking that it would be like a yearly kind of update that we would then pull into the tool, and I believe it would not be incredibly manual. But I, I may have to get back to you on how we determine that a parcel is vacant.
Thank you.
Start with, no, go ahead, we'll, we'll finish with this side, then we'll go to this side.
My, my question is pretty quick. I, I really think this is a great tool, I just wanted to first off state that. I think this is going to be really beneficial to a lot of different parties. The only question I have is the report filters. How customizable are the report filters? And is there an ability to have some periodical, periodic feature updates, or any kind of firmware updates that will provide more resources? Is that the intention, to have this kind of grow with the, the need, or is this going to be kind of a standalone? This is 1.0, and then we're looking at developing a different?
Yeah, that's a great question. So when we talk about data and filters, the problem is, well, not a problem, the, the, I guess a hurdle is that you have to create the data for it to exist. So for example, up until recently, we haven't been collecting data that has been identified as very important to the community, such as number of parking spaces, if a project received any type of reduction. So if they, we, if we fielded those questions, we would have to go and say, okay, when was the project approved? What is the approved plan set? And look at a large PDF to see number of parking spaces, and then provide that information. But what we've done is we've reformatted our internal permitting software for that to be a field that we could then report on a lot more in an automated fashion. So and then in terms of expanding the filters in the future, I think if we hear, based on feedback of users of the tool, that there's certain pieces of information that they're looking for, we would look at that and say, okay, how can we either fit that in to how we're already kind of managing our data and collecting our data, or do we need to create another field in the actual permit to say, okay, here's this new piece of data that has been identified as important to the community, let's start collecting that going forward? So I think the idea is that we are responsive to the community, but also hopefully serving as like a solid foundation from a, like a usability perspective.
And one last follow-up, the UI definitely needs a little bit of work.
Yeah, for sure.
But, no, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Peterson.
So you mentioned feedback from users, and I'm wondering if, maybe beyond the scope of this, but if this tool will be useful for the city to identify, you know, consistent roadblocks or problems that could be addressed through, you know, zoning changes or new ordinances? So for instance, developers keep, you know, trying to do this, but the following prevents them from doing that, we can address that legislatively. Is that something that this tool is designed for?
It's not currently designed for it, but that's a great piece of feedback, and I think having like a feedback kind of suggestion box built into the tool would be a fantastic idea, both about the usability, the user interface of the tool, but also, I, I want to do this project, but there's nowhere in the city that I can do it. So then we can take that information and say, look, this is what the developer community is trying to do in the city, but here are the roadblocks that they're encountering, and how can we kind of remove those to help facilitate housing production? I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you. You said that the, well, let me back up, the LEAP grant, what does that pay for? Is it just the tool itself? And I guess that dovetails into my next question, is where are we, or you, in the expending of that money? How much is left, and what's to be spent on?
These are all very good questions. So the objective of the grant, as I understand it, is to facilitate the production of housing. So I think if we can, obviously, there's a scope that we included on our, on our grant application, so if we're looking at going outside of that scope with new inventive and creative ways that we've realized, hey, we can facilitate the production of housing in this new way that we didn't include in our grant application, I think what we would do is we would re-scope, and they've been really nice to work with, HCD, the folks that granted us the money. And then in terms of remaining funds, so, so far, we spent about $100,000, and that means we have 400 left. But we're looking at things that we've accomplished already that we can attribute to the grant, and hopefully, some new things that we're currently brainstorming, like today, we were thinking about that. So I don't know if Jess or Amy have anything else to add to that, but.
Good evening, thanks for the question. I'm Amy Nicholson, supervising planner for current development. And as Connor mentioned, we are exploring a number of different ways to accelerate the production of housing. We want to spend every dollar, because it's free money from the state, and now that we have an extra year to spend it, we, we really see the ability to refine the tools that Connor has presented to you, but also to accomplish a lot of other work that we've set out in our housing element and other housing-related items.
Thanks. And I guess I really applaud the user-friendly emphasis. I still struggle with my VCR, okay? So I think that the user-friendliness on the front end and the back end, right? We want people to be able to use the tool and get the information they need, and we need on the back end, people to be able to get the information into the tool, right? Who does the IT? Who, who, when, once the tool is up and running, we spent that last dollar, we're good to go, now it's ours, then what?
Yeah, so
My VCR's been letting me down, by the way, lately, so.
I'm sorry?
My VCR's been letting me down lately, this is why I'm very
I can take a look at that for you, if you want. Yeah, so part of what I'm thinking in developing the tool is, like I said, we're, we want to create a system that doesn't require a planner to ask a developer to make changes to zoning information, that the developer has, they're not familiar with zoning and land use and things of that nature. So I think my vision of the completed project is a system that a planner can maintain, and it would take not a lot of legwork to actually do that, to the point where it can be folded into an existing job description and just part of like a monthly or, or something, somebody's duties in that, in that way.
And so I guess that our IT department will be versed
Yes.
In the tool, and, you know, when, when it's playing, you know, Daffy Duck cartoons for no good reason, there's someone who will come in and be knowledgeable about how to get it back online?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll echo my fellow commissioners' sentiments, that it sounds like a useful tool, and we look forward to seeing it up and running. I'm wondering if you've looked at the situation wherein sometimes a developer will do his due diligence and come up with a different idea for a piece of property than what the city has? Have you built in any mechanisms for that kind of feedback? I mean, I'm struck by what we heard in the, in the public comments today. Sometimes we say a property is good for a certain thing, and, and the owners and developers come up with different ideas. Do we have any mechanisms we're considering for that eventuality?
I believe, so I think in this situation, in that situation, it would be, I guess in the scenario I'm imagining, is that somebody has this idea for a project, and then they enter that project in, and they're like, what the heck, I can't do that anywhere? Or they have their own property that they own, and they say, okay, I want to do this many housing units, and then it kicks them out and says, this is what you can do, not what you're wanting. And then at that point, they have kind of a disconnect that they're aware of, that they can then address city staff and say, hey, this is what I'm trying to do, you've changed my, my zoning rules, what happened? Does, does that kind of answer your question?
Well, I think it does, but it, it suggests that, well, we'd have to deal with those on a case-by-case basis, probably, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carter just brought something into my thought process. Is there, I noticed that there was a warning, and it was a tiger salamander. Are there any warnings about pending legislation that might affect? Oh. Did we just do that already? Is it the VCR? I'm sorry. Did we already ask that question? No.
Pending legislation, so this would be a situation where they're coming out with a new law that says, this is going to affect in the, like, if adopted, this legislation would affect this property in this way.
Correct.
I think that that is not necessarily something that we've considered, due to the ever-changing environment that is the state legislature, and how creative and sudden those changes can be made. But I guess as things are adopted, then they would be added as a warning, I think is kind of what we're thinking.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Holton.
So just to, first, the actual question I have is just regarding potential timeline for rollout. I know that you guys don't have a actual hard timeline, but is there a tentative kind of timeline? Are we looking like, in the development process, we're about six months away, eight months away? I mean, what are we, what are we looking at as far as time duration that we can actually get our hands on it? And secondly, for Commissioner Sanders, you can upgrade to a DVD, my friend. And lastly, just as a former developer of a lot of software, I can tell you that for that last request, that would be incredibly difficult to, I mean, there's a lot of variables involved in programming something like that, so that'd be really tough. But it would be very cool, and I do really like the idea, from a ex-developer standpoint, of having a potential for feedback that is, you know, actually a really, really good, you know, suggestion kind of button at the bottom of the page. Because I really do think that we are going to run into a lot of these scenarios, where we have a piece of, of property that somebody owns, that, you know, if there was a way that we could kind of figure out how to kind of be a little more proactive in informing the property owners, and also informing the developers of any potential changes that are coming down the pipeline. But, but yeah, again, I just would love to know if there's a tentative, because I'm really itching to get my hands on this, to tell you the truth. I want to help trial it for you, do a little beta testing for you guys, so.
Cool, thank you. That's really exciting. So it's difficult to even kind of approximate, because we were, until very recently, thinking that it needed to be done in this September. But I'm hoping in the next few, several months, we'll have a pretty fleshed-out demo, and that will give us a few months to solicit and incorporate feedback for a final product by September. And I say final, because, like I said, it, the, the grant needs to be expended by September, but I'm hoping that we build something that can then be maintained with using a staff capacity that we already have at the city, and there wouldn't be an extra lift on top of normal duties.
Well, the, was that it, everybody? Well, the advantage of going last is that most of the questions have been asked, but I have just two quick ones, I think. When is, or are you planning on taking this to the city council as a study session or report item?
We originally had intended to bring it to the council as a study session. We prepared a memo to kind of give them a status update, and that was a few months ago. And we currently do not have a plan to present to council, but I imagine we'll provide additional memos as major updates are made in the project.
And then my last question before I go to public comments is, how And then my last question before I go to public comments is, how will you get the word out to the community that this is available? You have your list from the preliminary meeting, so will you try and get the paper to talk about it, go out to, and, community organizations and talk about it?
Yeah, so I think that we can use the talents and skills related to engagement of our, we're going through the general plan update process right now, and I think we've learned a lot of lessons about outreach and connecting with people where they are. In addition to, we have Kevin King, who I believe his official status is, or title is Communications Coordinator. Thank you. So he has like a magical plethora of connections and ways to get the word out. And I believe, I imagine we would do the same thing at the front counter with, that we did with the survey, is we would say, hey, here's this tool, let us know what you think about it. So, yeah.
Thank you. And I do want to thank you. It was a great report, so thank you.
Thank you.
And so with that, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion on this. This is not a public hearing, but public comment. And we will do the same three minutes if anybody is interested. If you're in the chamber, I don't see anybody rising. Is there comments on Zoom?
Yes, it looks like we have one hand raised on Zoom. Gregory Furon, I'm going to give you permissions to speak, and can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, thank you, Chair Weeks and members of the Commission. I want to second, I guess, what Commissioner Holton was saying about allowing feedback on the software itself in order to improve it. I'm one of those super-successful software authors of the 1980s who would never have made nearly as much money and had as much fun if I didn't have a huge set of users who were constantly telling me what I could do to make it better. So please take that as a bit of advice to be able to really make it successful. But what I really called to talk about was, now that, now that I've both developed housing in the city of Santa Rosa in the 1980s, 90s, and aughts, but not recently, but helped a lot of community-based nonprofits who have provided social services, whose clients needed housing, with the latest burst of state and federal funds, begin to look for properties that they could develop. There are far more, as you know, community-based nonprofit housing developers, and a whole lot of community-based organizations partnering with housing developers, to be able to figure out a way of getting their share of housing into Santa Rosa. They tend to be the extremely low and acutely low and, you know, very low. And so you don't get a whole lot of traditional developers who come in the door and say, hey, I want to go that deep into subsidizing the housing participants. But I'm usually there, and several others are there, trying to ask you to ask them to get that low, to be able to really serve all of our community. This tool sounds like it's going to be something that, and maybe I'm wrong, Connor, but if I asked it to tell me every development, every piece of the city that I could put reasonably some of those very low, extremely low, acutely low units in, then I might actually find some. And it would certainly, hopefully, allow me to, if we had a good, strong user connection, link up with folks who are looking at the same properties for the same purpose. So I guess what I'm advocating for is both a strong user group to make it better, some real features that allow us to connect with each other. We all ought not to be trying to find the parcels ourselves and/or never, ever knowing who else might be interested in the same kinds of projects. If you can build a team of developers from, who seek to, you know, figure out a way of getting all of the citizens housed in Santa Rosa, and have had usually a strong history of trying to blend the rich and poor together in the same project, we're all going to benefit. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other hands raised in Zoom?
Chair Weeks, there are no other hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. So with that, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the Commission. I think, Mr. McKay, we were giving you suggestions and comments at the same time. So I will lead off, though, and say, I think it would be a great idea if you could do a study, excuse me, a study session at some time to the council, you know, whether it be next year, when the grant's over, so that when they are asked by people in the community and developers about the tool, they have some knowledge. And I know it would be very difficult, but I'm going to ask it anyway. And I, not necessarily in House Santa Rosa, but is there any way at some point there could be a list of pending housing legislation that could be kept updated somehow, either through the, or is there? And I just don't know it. Somewhere on the site. Anyway, maybe that's just too wacky, but, anyway. Other comments? Commissioner Holton, thank you.
First off, I'd like to really acknowledge Gregory Furon for that great comment that he provided. That was some really great feedback, and it actually invoked a thought. It would really, really be awesome to have an option, and again, just another suggestion, an option in the filters to be able to sort for a piece or a property or a parcel that has a high popularity. So that if there were, you know, numerous developers that seemed to be really interested in this individual piece of property, they'd be more inclined to kind of go ahead and get their ducks in order, to go ahead and start making efforts to develop that piece of land, because that is a hot piece of land. And that's the thing, those are the kind of things that are going to really, really help builders identify what the trends are. Because, you know, all builders, that's what we want to know, is like, what are the trends? What area is, you know, it's like my aunt once told me, she said, when you're buying a property, you don't buy the house, you buy the neighborhood. So if builders could have some kind of crystal ball to look into to say, oh, this seems to be a really hotbed of activity right now, this is where I'd like to get in, you know, that's one of the tools that I think is going to be most advantageous to a lot of the prospective developers. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
I think my final comment, I just want to hit this, it's sort of been referred to obliquely, but I think staff and the city of Santa Rosa in particular have really tried to make Santa Rosa a pro-housing city. And I think they, we've seen a lot of different efforts over the years to do outreach, think creatively, and I really want to commend staff on this part of it. I think this is another great tool that looks like it will be very useful, both for developers and the city.
Well said. Any other comments? Okay.
This is a really small and nitpicky. On Slide 8, it's the report slide where you had the warning, tiger salamander. It seems to me a more appropriate heading would be Constraints, and we could use that expansively to talk about what things might limit uses on the site, so.
Good point.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like from us before we send you on your way?
No, I've got a lot of good information. But if there's anything else y'all can think of, either now or my email address was up, you know where to find me. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And we'll just take a quick break while Commissioner Sanders leaves the dais. Thank you. Okay, well, go ahead and get the meeting going again if everybody's ready. Okay, so this next item is 9.1. It's our one and only public hearing tonight, Fir Ridge Meadows exempt project. It's a planning project, Zero Fir Ridge Drive, PRJ 23-001. And Planner Tumienz will be providing the staff report today.
Chair Weeks, did you do the ex parte disclosures?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is an ex parte item, so we'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Carter.
I have visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Peterson?
I also visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Holton?
I also have visited the site and I have nothing further to disclose.
And Commissioner Cisco?
I have been to the site, and I looked up and read the minutes of our December 9, 2004, meeting, just for my own entertainment and trip down memory lane. So, nothing further, and there's no impact as to what's been reported already.
Thank you. And Commissioner, or Vice Chair Duggan?
I have visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Thank you. I also visited the site and have nothing further to disclose. And so with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Weeks and members of the Planning Commission. I am Krista Tumienz, Senior Planner, and I'm here to present a project known as Fir Ridge Meadows. It's a proposed hillside development and tentative map. And the hillside development permit would allow a tentative map and the development of 13 single-family dwellings in an area that exceeds 10% slope. And the tentative map would subdivide 6.03 acres into 13 residential lots. Just to give you an idea of where the project is located, it's located in the northeast quadrant of the city, off of Fountain Grove Parkway. This is right off of Fir Ridge Road, Fir Ridge Drive, sorry. And it's a vacant parcel, and I just wanted to show you what the aftermath of Tubbs Fire did to the area, and how it looked after the 2017 fire. The parcel was also affected, some of the trees were damaged. There were no structures on the site at the time, I believe. And here is a more recent aerial showing the rebirth of the area and all the new development that preceded the Tubbs Fire. And this is the project location. The red line indicates the extent of where the project will extend. So there's no proposed grading or development past that red line area to the north, where the slope starts to exceed 25%. Just to give you an idea of how much of the lot is being developed. This is a street view of the project site. As you can see, it's a vacant lot. Meadow is an accurate description with various trees. And just to give you some project history, this has an interest, this site has an interesting project history. So when the Fir Ridge North at Fountain Grove subdivision was approved in 87, a condition of its development was the dedication of an approximately seven-acre site for development of either a school or a low or moderate-income housing project pursuant to the planned development policy statement that was adopted by the council in 81. This is the PD. It shows Lot F, which is the subject parcel, and Lot E, which turned into Fir Ridge Park, as we know it today. On December 9, 2004, the Planning Commission granted a conditional use permit, hillside development permit, and tentative map to allow the Santa Rosa City School District to construct 36 low or moderate-income airspace condominium units on the site for school district employees. On October 14, 2019, council adopted alternatives to the Fir Ridge MOU, and extended the terms for additional three years to allow the school district to explore alternatives to construction of affordable housing on the site. On August 26, 2022, the city of Santa Rosa and the school district ratified an MOU releasing the requirement of workforce housing. And shortly after, on September 30, 2022, a quitclaim deed was recorded transferring the property from the district to the city. And then on, in October of 2022, the Christopherson Builders, the applicant, purchased the parcel. On October 26 of 2022, the city held a virtual neighborhood meeting for the project. On January 11, 2023, applications were filed for the project before you, and a notice of application was mailed to property owners and surrounding occupants on February 11, 2023. Here's the general plan and zoning map of this site. As you can see, this parcel and the surrounding area is part of that planned development, and the general plan designation is a low residential. This project qualifies for a Class 32 exemption under California Government Code Section 15332, which is an infill development exemption. And the exemption is included as an attachment to your packet with all the technical studies that accompany it. This is a slope analysis that was provided by the applicant. As you can see, the green area indicates where it's 0 to 10% slope. The yellow is 10 to 25, and the red is 25 and greater. And generally, we don't allow development on slopes greater than 25%. Most of the development will occur, all the development will occur south of that delineation of that red area. And here's the tentative map showing where the 13 units would be situated on each of the lots. There's sort of a dash line that I've highlighted in dark red that indicates that boundary where the slope starts to exceed 25%, and there would be no development north of that border. As you can see, I believe 12 of the units, 11 of the units access the newly-created cul-de-sac, and then two of the units directly front onto Fir Ridge Drive. Here is an architectural rendering of what the units will look like. The applicant has provided plans for each housing type. And based on the hillside development findings, staff noted that the project site is not readily visible from off-site areas or major roadways. The project is set in a bowl-shaped area, and it will be below the surrounding residential areas and not have an impact on views, or be prominently visible along a ridge. And the proposed dwellings appear to be in character with the surrounding neighborhood. In addition, the dwellings are designed to be sympathetic to the slope of each lot by building on the flattest portion and orienting, orienting the roof ridges perpendicular to the direction of the slope to minimize the visual obtrusiveness and massing. And here are some slides showing the different plan types that are proposed on each of the lots. And here's the landscaping plan. The applicant has stated they will try to preserve as many trees that are, as they can, as long as they are healthy. Many of them were burned or damaged by the fires, so- damaged by the fires, so depending on the health of the tree, they may or may not be saved. And here's the proposed fencing. There is a sort of a see-through-type fence, cedar and wire mesh fence proposed along the northern border of the northern lots, and then a solid-type fencing for the remainder lots. There are no unresolved issues. However, staff did receive a comment from a neighbor earlier today that was emailed to you this afternoon, and her concerns included general noise. So she stated that it's already kind of a noisy area. She has a measuring device, and it's already at 55 decibels from her window. So her concerns are with construction noise and traffic noise from construction and the general noise from the project. She was also requesting that a four-way stop at Thomas Lake Harris Drive be constructed, and that if, she called them berms to slow traffic, but I think she was talking about speed humps or speed bumps, and she requested that those be put in. And we have someone from W Trans-Deline available to comment further, but I did speak to Rob Sprinkle, our in-person traffic division, and he stated that a four-way stop is not warranted based on the trip counts. So there's 12 trips in the afternoon and nine in the morning, and that speed bumps or humps are not planned, especially with their impact to emergency response times in this critical fire danger area. There were additional concerns that were expressed during the pre-application neighborhood meeting. Those included tree removal, traffic, emergency evacuation, water, and development of existing open space. I think many neighbors assumed that this was open space connected to the park to the north and didn't realize it was developable, or that the district already had an approved project on the site prior to this project. And this project is in a wui, so it is in a wildland urban interface, and the homes are subject to wildland urban building standards. So they have to be built to a certain standard and the types of materials that they use. They would have to have sprinklers also. And as far as emergency evacuation, we have someone from fire available from the city, and also the applicant is available to answer any additional questions you might have. There's also someone from water if there are additional questions. Because the project is within the general plan density limits, the unit, the lot sizes are within the allowable sizes, and staff can meet all the findings for the hillside development permit and the tentative map. Planning and Economic Development Department is recommending that the Planning Commission approve a hillside development permit and tentative map to allow for the creation of 13 parcels for the construction of 13 single-family detached homes on 3.82-acre portion of a 6.03-acre lot. Here's my contact information for those attending via Zoom and those in this room. If you have any additional questions, feel free to email me or give me a call. For those that are calling in, my work, my office number is 707-543-4692. And again, the applicant is available behind me.
Thank you. Does the developer, or the applicant, have a presentation, or are they here just to answer questions? Hold on just one second. Okay. So it looks like you do have a presentation. So before that, are there any questions of, go ahead, Commissioner Sisko.
Yeah, Ms. Tumienz, I want to fully understand the history of the MOU requirements. And in reading the staff report, it sounds like what happened, what was going to be required if the school district sold the property, they would have to use those proceeds to either fund another project and/or fund down payments for school district employees. And it looks like what happened is they quitclaimed it to the city, and I guess what I'm curious about is, was the city considered the owner selling it to Christopherson, and is the city responsible now for meeting that same condition?
The city quitclaimed as part of the condition of, it is a long history. There was a holding agreement. There were 12 amendments to that holding agreement. There was an MOU and a subsequent amendment to the MOU. And each time, they kind of changed the parameters of what was an allowed development. But you're correct that in the last one, you no longer had to do the employee housing. They could, they could build it or they could sell to a third-party developer. And if they sold it, then they were to use the proceeds, as you stated. And so the city quitclaimed it to the school district, and then the school district sold it to the developer. And the school district is bound by the terms of the MOU to use those proceeds, either to provide the units or to establish a revolving loan program to provide down payment assistance. And the MOU provides some parameters around that loan program, so that if that is the option that they choose, there are two different criteria that they have to follow in terms of how to set up that program and some monitoring. And if they determine that they can't or don't want to use the proceeds in that way, then I believe that's when it reverts to the city, and then the city has to use it for low-income housing. It's kind of a complicated tale.
And that's where I was confused, because in the staff report and under project history, it says a quitclaim deed was recorded transferring the property from the school district to the city. So that's why I thought the city was, no, that's where I'm completely confused.
That would, that would be not totally correct.
That's not correct. Okay, so the school district is still responsible for doing?
For using the proceeds as outlined in the MOU.
Okay. And how will we know that they've done that, or their timeline for that?
Let me see. They have certain criteria they have to follow. There are some reporting requirements. And then, if they decide that they don't want to do that, the proceeds, then the city has to use the proceeds for the sole purpose of financing construction of low-income housing. So if they opt not, then it reverts back to the city for the city to then use the funding in that way.
Okay.
But so you're correct, there will have to be some kind of reporting and monitoring system, which some of it is outlined here, but it would be something where the city would periodically check in with the district as to the status of those proceeds.
Okay, thanks.
I want to follow up on that question. I have a long history with this project back in the days when I worked for the Housing Authority. And who, would it be the Department of Housing and Community Development that would be, you know, monitoring to make sure that the district does what they had promised over all these years? And it says it's, they have, we have 12 months after the district determines if they can or can't do it to get the money. This, actually, I'm probably going way off base here, aren't I? Because that's not really their issue tonight. So let me just put it in your brain to maybe contact to, that we have a concern as a commission to follow up with that at some time, but that's not our issue here tonight. And I just slapped myself. So, okay. So any other questions for staff before we go to the applicant? Okay, now, does the applicant have a presentation? You're here to answer questions if, I can't hear you. So if you could go up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself for the record.
Sure, yeah. Sorry about that. I just got up, got down. I wasn't sure what to do.
That's okay. No problem.
My name is Amy Christopherson-Bolton. I'm here tonight representing Christopherson Builders, and I just wanted to introduce my team. We have Keith and Brenda Christopherson participating virtually, as well as Dealeen Whitlock, the traffic engineer who performed the study. In the audience here, we have Jeff Coleman from BKF, Jeff Farrell from Farrell Faber Architects, Steve Kovanis, who did the landscape plan, and Steve Sharp, who's a planner. I also wanted to commend the staff. They did an excellent job. The report and presentation is accurate, and it's inclusive. The project conforms with the San Rosa General Plan zoning and the hillside development ordinance. It's also how it's designed, the plan is, or the project is compatible with the existing neighborhood, which I think is very important. We do agree with the staff's recommendation and appreciate their hard work getting us to this point. We've reviewed and agree with the approval resolutions and the Development Advisory Committee conditions. So in summary, there's no unusual development environmental constraints identified. The staff recommends the project for approval. We support and recommend. The Planning Commission, please approve this project, and our team is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. If there are any in-person attendees, not seeing anybody, but if any of you want to make a statement on this, please go to the podium. Not seeing anybody. Are there, is there anybody on Zoom with their hands raised?
Chair Weeks, we have a couple people on Zoom. Natalie Cosentino-Manning, I'm going to send you a prompt to unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record. Natalie, you're unmuted. You can start speaking if you'd like.
Okay, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, yeah, I'm Natalie Cosentino-Manning. I'm at 1908 Lion Court, adjacent to the Fir Ridge Meadows development. Thank you again for having this meeting, and I do appreciate the history also of that site. I remember when it was going to be something much larger and much more ominous to our community, so I appreciate the changes and that these houses will be very congruent to what we have now. I do want to talk about the trees. As we all know, we lost a lot of our trees during the 2017 wildfires. And I did review the arborist report, which I thought was very well constructed. I was surprised to see that there were 122 trees that were documented, and 49 of which have been fire damaged. However, there's about 30 to 40 that are very good health and still of significant stature, some of those being coast redwoods and live oak, which are extremely important. So one of the things I want to discuss or hear about is potentially making some room, especially the one on Slide 7. There's a very significant oak that's very apparent and extremely beautiful and does house several different raptors and variety of different bird species. But how that particular tree will be addressed, as well as some of the other older ones, and then the replacement of those, if there are suggestions that we can do to mitigate from, for some of those in replacement. We actually lost a big, large oak on Lion Court as well, so potentially to be mitigated. I do also want to address Patterson, the wildlife biologist, who's actually more of a vegetation biologist, who really didn't address the bird species that do inhabit that meadow. It's not a hayfield, by the way. It is a meadow. And there are some vocalizations that have been going on for the last several months, so there are definitely bird species, raptors in particular, that inhabit that meadow interface. And so definitely understanding that there will be some type of bird observances done prior to construction. So we're really hoping to see the results of that and how those will be mitigated. I do want to also alert the concern of the previous person who put in the comment regarding construction. I am hoping that this is not considered a fire rebuild and that this goes back to the original designation of how construction is done, the hours of construction, the mitigation for construction, especially dust and debris. And so I definitely want to understand what that looks like and what the timing of the construction looks like and length of construction. Will it be done in phases and/or will it be all done at once? And I do alert the concerns of the city, of the council members there regarding the exchange of hands on how this property was determined to go to, directly to Christopherson, and that there wasn't more formal bid process that the public was aware of. So, thank you very much, and I hope you can answer some of my concerns and questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gregory Farron, I'm going to send you a prompt to unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Gregory Farron. I want to thank Amy and Natalie for that wonderful interchange, trying to balance the needs of making money on one hand and preserving the environment on the other. But I want to also thank Karen, because there's no reason why you shouldn't, why you should be slapping your face. This sounds like a project that totally abandoned the original design and the original, what I see as an attempt to, you know, remedy a little of our economic disparity in the city. Somebody long ago, long before probably the entire project in the hills was built, thought it ought to be a place where lots of people could live, not just the rich. And that seems to have been abandoned. So if there's elements of it that still retain the possibility of putting some money into somebody who isn't rich, please follow through. Please help the city try to balance the needs of the entire city, because this little parcel, as well as most of the parcels around it, certainly aren't doing anything in that regard. And that's sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Markorelli, I'm going to send you a prompt to unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record. Greg, you're unmuted. Greg, you are now muted. If you're calling in, press star nine, and that can unmute yourself.
Is there any other hands raised after that person?
Greg, you can go ahead and try speaking. You're unmuted. There seems to be some kind of a connection issue, so if you want to try calling in, you can call 877-853-5257. And our meeting ID is 843-3052-7584. Once you call in, if you press star nine, then that can unmute yourself.
We'll wait just a couple minutes to see if they're able to call in. Any action?
It looks like we do have another hand raised, if we want to move on.
Why don't you go ahead?
Debbie Mees, I'm going to send you a prompt to unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. I sent the earlier message, and I have to, I have to back up here just a little bit to say that we purchased a house here on the corner of Lake Thomas and Harris Drive and Fir Ridge Drive about two years ago, and we're just recently moving into it. So we're late to this party. we're late to this party, would be the first thing that I would say. Again, we are ones who thought that that was an open space there, and certainly were concerned about the density considerations in the area. But I would like to, Ms. Bolton, I believe was the name from Christopherson's, mentioned that there had been a traffic study done. And I would really like to get more information on that traffic study, because the traffic is way higher than was represented earlier in the meeting. I would say, there are not 12 cars that pass in an afternoon. There are 12 cars that pass in the first hour in the morning. So traffic on this road is already very heavy. The measurements, the decibel measurements that I get on my back porch are 50 to roughly 78. They are about 35 to 50 inside the house with all the doors and windows closed. So I know that there are noise ordinances in the city of Santa Rosa, and I would just like to understand a little bit more about how those are enforced, especially as with regard to pending developments.
We don't answer questions during the public comment portion, but we will ask staff to address that at the end of public comments. So if you want to keep asking questions during the rest of your time.
No, it's just, I would like, I would like to understand that there was a study done. I would either like access to it or to understand a little bit more about it, because based on what I'm hearing, it is grossly inaccurate. That would be all I would request, is that I just don't have any information as to how these kinds of projects are approved based on the noise ordinances within the city of Santa Rosa. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a caller that joined. Greg, if you would like to make a comment still, and that's you calling, press star nine, and that will raise your hand. Perfect. If you press star six, that will unmute yourself. Perfect. You can go ahead and begin your comment. You are unmuted.
Yes, my name is Greg Markorelli. I live at 1907 Lion Court. My property abuts the property that's being developed, and I have some of the same concerns as Natalie, especially the bidding process that was done. The wildlife is pretty extensive. In your plan, between Lot 6 and 7, you have a road. If you go up towards that road or proposed road to the east, it's like a wildlife corridor. I mean, the raptors are many, three or four different kinds of hawks, different kinds of owls, boxers, bobcats, all kinds of really great wildlife. And one of my questions is the same, Natalie, is once this project starts, are you going to build all 13, or are you going to build it piecemeal? Because some of the houses that are being built or have been built, sometimes it takes about a year or so, and it's like ongoing constantly, almost seven days a week. So for me, it would be pretty intrusive to see that happening and it taking years and years. Since the market has changed a bit with the tech layoffs and inflation slowing down, there's many, many houses that are sitting there remaining unsold in this area. So, and since the property is not, you know, because of the elevation change, you know, it's only being portionally being used, has there been a thought by Christopherson, since they've been in the community for, I guess, 30 years, if I recall, you know, maybe to donate this land back to the city and keep it, keep it a natural, beautiful piece of property. Again, following it back up with what was earlier said, the number of trees here are actually doing quite well, even, you know, this is since 2017. So I, again, I'm not an arborist, I'm not a person with that type of background, but the trees have responded quite well considering how many years of drought we've gone through. So I would also question those types of findings by what was in this report. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other hands raised in Zoom?
Chair Weeks, there are no other hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the commission. Let me start off with some questions I heard that either staff or the applicant team might be able to answer. So there was a question on the trees, and which trees, and are there more trees that could remain? So trees were a question, bird species, the issues, is this considered a fire rebuild? And then the traffic study, which I believe is in the packet and is available to the public, but if you could address those questions to start, and then if my fellow commissioners have other questions that they heard, that would be great.
Thank you, Chair Weeks. So to first tackle the question regarding the removal of trees, if you look at the DAC report, which is, I believe, Exhibit A, condition number two under planning conditions requires that if there are any, removal of any trees, they'll be scheduled outside of the bird nesting season. And if that schedule, if this schedule's not possible, qualified biologists will conduct pre-construction surveys for nesting birds no more than seven days prior to construction, that it would include grading. If the biologist finds any active songbird nests within 50 feet or active raptor nests within 200 feet of the work area, the biologist will delineate a buffer zone where no construction will occur until the biologist has determined that all young have fledged from the nest or the nest is no longer active. And that size of the nest buffer will be determined by the biologist and will be based on the specific species and their sensitivity to any construction disturbance. And then I believe, I wasn't, I didn't make myself very clear as far as the trip generation for this project. So there is a traffic study that was done, and it's an attachment to your packet as part of the supporting studies for the exemption. And what it stated is that this proposed project would be expected to generate an average of 123 trips per day. That would include nine during morning peak hour and 12 during evening peak hour. And so the small amount of peak hour trips did not trigger any requirement for a four-way stop or any mitigation as far as upgrading infrastructure to the roadways or things of that nature.
Could you state clearly where, Ms. Mees can find the traffic study.
Yes.
Give her some direction for that.
Yes, so it is posted on the agenda for today's meeting under this item. And let me check the attachment number.
Attachment number nine.
Nine, yes. And it's labeled "traffic study," yes, and prepared by W Trans. And then as far as noise, so we do have construction hours included in that DAC report as part of the conditions of approval, and that would be condition number nine. Construction hours shall be limited to 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM Saturdays. And those can be amended if the commission chooses to do so. But those are the conditions in the DAC report. And then BAC MED does require basic construction mitigation measures that are meant to reduce fugitive dust impacts, but they do help to dampen sound in that they require that idling times be minimized as much as possible, more so to reduce airborne toxic contaminants in the air.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Commissioner Holton?
Just one really quick question about, so I know we've actually, I believe it was Natalie that actually asked about tree replacement. In the event that a certain number of trees were displaced, would there be any efforts in putting new trees out or doing new planting to accommodate the loss of the existing trees? That's it. Thank you.
Our, yes, thank you, Commissioner Holton. Our tree ordinance does provide standard mitigation, either in the form of replanting trees to a certain ratio, so either one to one, or one to two, or one to four. And if that's not possible, perhaps the site is not suitable for an additional tree, for whatever reason, because it's impacted due to soil type or structures, then they can pay into a mitigation fund where trees are planted elsewhere in the city.
And in regard to coastal, or coastal redwoods or oaks, I know in past, we've had other mitigation actions where because of the sheer stature of an individual tree, there was a request to provide more trees than one to, a one-to-one ratio. Are we, am I under the assumption that we're kind of, even though some of those trees are coastal redwoods, we're still staying with the one-to-one ratio?
So the replacement ratio is based on the diameter of the tree that's proposed to be removed, yes?
Any other, any other questions?
I did neglect to answer one question regarding fire rebuild. So this is in the RC combining district. However, this will be treated as new construction, because it's not replacing what was burned. So they'd be subject to standard construction, the construction hours that are stated in the DAC report and standard code restrictions.
Yeah, I think just to follow up on that, I believe the concern of one of the callers was that in the rebuild areas, we had taken some action years back to amend the construction hours to allow longer periods, or to, I believe, so they could get there earlier in the morning with the trucks. But so, as Ms. Tumien's indicated, this is not a rebuild. So if the caller was thinking about those extended construction hours, they would not apply here. And as she stated, they are the much more conservative construction hours in this condition.
And once again, we could refer people back to the DAC report, which lays out the construction hours. So, so any other questions?
I think that, unless I missed it, I think there's a question for the applicant, if possible, to answer on the phasing.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so there was a question on phasing of the unit. So I think the last caller, or second to the last caller, might have asked that.
Thank you. Yes, both Natalie and Greg asked that question. So no, our plan is...
Could you put the, speak really closely into the microphone?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, both Natalie and Greg asked that question. We fully plan to build everything out at once. And assuming the stars align, we plan to be completely finished and sold out of the project by the end of 2024.
2024? I'm sorry.
Yes, 2024, next year. So we're not going to be, we're not going to be phasing, we're building it all out at once. Yeah.
Commissioner Cisco?
Oh yeah, I wonder if staff could help illuminate Debbie on our noise ordinance? I think she was just asking a general question about that, just to get that information out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Cisco. So the noise ordinance doesn't specifically address construction noise, because that's sort of a temporary situation. But noise in general, complaints would be submitted to code enforcement, and code enforcement would investigate and enforce any noise violations that are outside of, I believe there are hours, I think it's after 10:00. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but there are certain hours where you can make noise. And outside of that, you can't. So I believe it's 10 o'clock is the cutoff, 10:00 PM. So if there are any noises outside of that window, complaints can be submitted online to code enforcement. They have a, I believe, an anonymous portal where you can submit your noise complaint, and they would investigate and enforce or act upon the violation.
I have one more thing to add on that, is the, one of the callers was making a note that she had a noise monitor. And the way that the city's ordinance is set up, it's measured on a 24-hour basis. It's CNEL or LDN is the measurement. So you may have a temporary spike, but you look at the average over the 24 hours. So that would be the way that it would be enforced. So sometimes there are single event noises. We've had discussions about this before, so you might have someone bouncing a basketball, and it might be like 75 decibels or something. But that isn't accounted for. You look at the total in the 24 hours. So I wanted to give that clarity to her, as it sounds like she's actively paying attention and monitoring. So that's a little more information.
And if I may, I would just add that any construction that, if any construction were to be occurring outside of the construction hours that are outlined in the conditions, our building division can be contacted, and building staff would make sure that they came into compliance with that condition.
Any other questions? Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, the staff report indicated that the applicant asked to invoke Senate Bill 330, which freezes the development standards and the fees. Do we know at what level? Was it for 2019 when the initial applications were made?
Yes, Commissioner Carter, so it would lock in the development fees at the time of submittal, which was this year, so 2023. Yeah.
2023, there. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so this item has two resolutions. The first one's a hillside development permit, and the second is a tentative map. Would somebody like to enter the first resolution? And we'll talk about, we'll make our comments about the project as a whole, and then enter the second resolution. So first resolution, Commissioner Holton?
Yeah, I'd like to make a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa approving a hillside development permit for Fur Ridge Meadows for the property located at 3700 Fur Ridge Drive, Santa Rosa, APN 173-620-030, file number PRJ23001, MAJ23-001, and HDP23-001, and await further reading.
Thank you. Is there a second, Commissioner Carter? So that was moved by Commissioner Holton and seconded by Commissioner Carter. So let's start with Commissioner Holton on comments. So, let's start with Commissioner Holton on comments.
So, it looks to me like the presentation was done very well. Thank you very much. Put together a really, really good presentation. And I'll be in support of this project. And I can make all the required findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Cisco?
I too can make all the findings. I did a lot of musing on this project, just because of the long history, and was thinking about, you know, our planning efforts and what we put in place, and what seemed like a really great idea, you know, more than 20 years ago, proves to be infeasible. So, might be also sort of speaking to Mr. Wiggins' issues as well. But, yeah, I thought a lot about this, how this has changed over the years and sat vacant. So, I'll be able to make all of the findings and perfectly willing to approve the project.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duggan?
I too can make all the required findings, and I have no further comments that my colleagues have not made already.
Thank you, and we'll go to Commissioner Carter.
Yeah, I think the staff has done a good job of analyzing the project and demonstrating that it's been evaluated similarly to other development in the area and conditioned appropriately. And I'll be able to make all the necessary findings to approve the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Well, I think, you know, we continue to see the effects of the Tubbs Fire now, six years later. I think this is still an area that's in transition, that's finding its new footing. And I think a lot of the comments we've heard from the public relate to that, relate to the rebuild, and relate to the changes that have occurred over the past few years. I think the project and the application address everything that needs to be addressed. I think that I can make all the required findings for this project. And I guess we'll see in another few years when all the parcels have been rebuilt or built. Hopefully, the neighbors are a little bit happier about the noise and traffic.
Thank you, and I also can make all the required findings. It was a real walk down memory lane for me. And I'm glad to see something happening. So, as I said, I can make all the required findings, and we'll be supporting the project. So, if we could go ahead and call the vote on this?
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Cisco?
Aye.
Commissioner Holton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duggan?
Aye.
Chair Weeks?
Aye. So that passes with six ayes. Commissioner Sanders abstaining. So then, the second resolution has to do with a tentative map. Do we have somebody who'd like to read that? Commissioner Holton, thank you.
I'd like to make a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa, approving the Fur Ridge Meadows tentative map, located at 3700 Fur Ridge Drive, Assessor's parcel number 173-620-030, file number PRJ23-001, HDP23-001, and MAJ23-001, and await further reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Vice Chair Duggan? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start on this end. Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I think, once again, the project was appropriately analyzed and conditioned by the staff, and I'll be able to make all the necessary findings to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I have nothing to add, other than I can make all the required findings of this resolution.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duggan?
I can make all the required findings and in support of the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cisco?
I also can make all of the requiring findings for the tentative map resolution.
Thanks. And Commissioner Holton?
I can also make all the required findings for the tentative map. There is one thing I would like to circle back on, though, and I would like to just make sure that it's really clear to echo the sentiments of some of the concerns of some of the callers, and their acknowledgement of some of our potential concerns, to just ensure that the right thing will be done and that the money will be going to, in the event that it falls upon the city after 12 months, that the, that the money can be appropriated properly, and that we can make sure that that's happening. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's a shame, it's really nice that this is a really, really great project, and it looks really well put together. But, to echo the sentiments of Gregory Ferron, earlier, he did state that, you know, it looks like we're just, we had an intent to have a property that was going to help low-income housing, which we have a huge, huge need for here in Santa Rosa, a huge, huge need for. And yet, we are seeing yet another $20 million project being put together for the rich. So I'd just like to ensure that we're all being very aware of how that money needs to be re-put back into the low-income housing area. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I also can make all the required findings. And I think staff heard us, and it's between the school district and the city, so. So with that, it was moved by Commissioner Holton, seconded by Vice Chair Duggan. If we could call the vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Cisco?
Aye.
Commissioner Holton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duggan?
Aye.
Chair Weeks?
Aye. So that passes with six ayes. Commissioner Sanders abstaining. And with that, unless there's anything else from staff, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you.